Evening and welcome to the Greenfield City Council 200th Regular Meeting. It's December 18, 2019. We're at the John Zahn Community Center in Greenfield. This meeting is being recorded, videotaped, and broadcast. If any of the persons present or also doing so, you must notify the chairperson at this time. Seeing no one, the clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Sun?
Here.
Counselor Burson?
Here.
Counselor Alice?
Present.
Counselor Pythrom?
Here.
Counselor Dolan?
Here.
Counselor Gilmore?
Here.
Counselor Wheeler?
I'm here.
Counselor Mayo?
Here.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Here.
Counselor Mass?
President.
President Renault?
Here.
Vice President Ricketts?
Here.
Counselor Stempel?
Madam President, you have a call.
Great. Do we have a motion to suspend the rules of procedure?
So moved.
There's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstain? Motion carries. So, a little point of procedure here. Because last night's meeting was canceled due to the weather. If we do want to hear from the mayor and to let the community have public comment, it's been advised by open meeting a lot today that somebody would have to make a motion. That could be as simple as motion to allow comment from the public, mayor and officers of the city, and second, and then we would have to vote on it. Okay. Counselor Mass?
The public--
Microphone.
The great amount of the public who was planning on being here last night to speak to the issues that were on the agenda last night are neither here to hear what is said nor to comment. I think it's inadvisable. While I know there may be one or two individuals who are here and like to speak to us, I don't think it's fair to those who aren't here for us to have an unannounced public comment session where the other side can't present their points of view. I would ask that the council deny this motion.
Counselor Gilmore?
So every month, the city council hears public comment, and I know that we were planning on doing that last night, and because of the weather, we weren't able to. I think that it sets a really bad precedent if we don't allow public comment for the month of December. And I think, given that there are very few people here, we should still take into account what they would like to say and recognize that there are a lot of people out there who weren't able to make it tonight, as is the case most months.
Is there any other discussion? Counselor Stempel?
I agree with Counselor Gilmore and Counselor Mass at the same time, so it's complicated. But I did want to-- I did speak to Ann Valentine, and I just wanted to be clear and say it here tonight that there was no ill will or bad intention for the way we split the meetings this month. It was actually our intention to make the meetings shorter. And our bad, we should have contacted our stakeholders to see when they were coming to speak. And so I know there was some misunderstanding there. So I just, as someone who's part of that process, I want to apologize. And a little bit of a debacle, but maybe we can make it better by making sure that-- please continue emailing us, calling us. And again, I apologize.
Vice President Ricketts?
I have to say that I agree with Counselor Mass. I don't have to. I want to agree with Counselor Mass on this one, just because there were many people who were going to come last night. I did see it indicated, and I saw that it was a lot of people. And I feel bad if we do allow it tonight. So I will have to vote no on this, and they will prepare accordingly, and so we will for the future. But I don't think it's going to set a bad precedent. Everyone understands it. It doesn't happen on a monthly basis, basically because we have other seasons, and we don't have snow and stuff all the time. So this is really just a one-off. So, that's it.
Any other discussion? Okay. Could you raise your hands, please? All in favor of the motion? Opposed? The motion passes. Abstain? Just want to make sure. Okay, so we are going to take public comment, and so if you just, like it usually is, only without a sign-up sheet. And if you want to just make your way to the front, state your name and address for the record. And now, knowing we just voted that way, probably nobody will speak. But maybe they will. So, if anybody-- yes, good, Sue. Thank you, Susan.
Did I do that right? Okay. My name is Susan Voss. I live at 158 Log Plain Road in Greenfield, and I am the Unit C Representative from the union. We were very disappointed that we weren't able to speak last night. We totally understood with the weather. It made total sense to cancel it. I know that a number of my colleagues are planning on speaking to the council in January, but I would like to speak to you tonight, so thank you for allowing that. We've talked a lot about money, employees, a living wage, past practice for funding. Now I'd like to tell you about our kids. I work at AEL, the Academy of Early Learning, where our kids range in age from three to five. I know that many of you have children or have had children. And I'd like to take you back to when your children were small. For Javi, that's a while.
Susan, could you pull the mic just a little bit closer to you? I want to make sure everybody's hearing you.
Is that better?
Yep. Is it-- it's on?
It is on. It's green.
Okay.
I don't like public speaking. Okay. That tells you how much I need to do this. Little people have big feelings, and sometimes they lack the words to express these feelings. Instead of being able to say "I'm frustrated" or "I'm tired," they react in the moment, and that could manifest itself in a bunch of different ways. Sometimes there's hitting, spitting, kicking, running down the hallways, things like that. We, as IAs, are there for them. We are there. We hold them close.
There it is.
Ooh, that worked.
Yeah.
We take the brunt of their big feelings. We hold them close. We try to help them work through their feelings. We try to help them regain control and to learn from the process how they can control their feelings. We're present at every moment of our kids' days. We strategically plan when we can go to the bathroom to avoid disrupting their days. We teach manners from saying please and thank you to showing them how to use a fork sometimes to eat. We model behaviors from our own manners to checking in with kids who perhaps are hurt or upset to try to model for the kids what they can do too. We redirect when necessary. We read endless books. We play games. We complete puzzles. We do artwork. And we're there. We're there every moment of those kids' days. We know our kids. We know when they're tired. We know when they're sick, when they're excited. And we know how to help them with that. Sometimes the nurse will tell them that they can't be sick because their temperature isn't high enough, and then they'll go throw up. And we knew it was coming. This is indeed the most fulfilling job I have ever had. I absolutely love what I do, and I love being with my kids every day. Along with our kids, we support our families. At AEL, both the before and after care programs are staffed by IAs. They are not staffed by teachers. In the elementary schools, early care and the wonderful extra outside time, especially at Four Corners that they get, those are staffed by IAs as well. The after care used to be until the rec department took over, and they're doing a lovely job. We help families be able to work their own jobs while keeping their kids safe, active, engaged, and loved. The contract that we negotiated is a fair contract, and it brings our wages up to a reasonable level. It will help us keep the people that we have working in the schools, and it will help us get new people to work in the schools, quality people, who can help our kids become everything they can be.
We got to the three-minute mark, so--
May I just finish up?
Yes, yep, absolutely.
Okay. While you're debating where to take these funds, I ask that you use another source rather than taking the school funds. Our kids and our community need to be supported, and the city needs to support them. So we're asking you to put money into the school system. Help us do what we do best and help our kids be the best they can be. So, thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Yep, you can just step on up. There's not a sign-in sheet.
Want me to sign in retroactively?
No. For the record, though, your name and address, per usual.
Of course. I'm Jim Geismann. I live at 64 East Cleveland Street. And I have a couple of things to say. First of all, for those of you who are going off the council, thanks for your service. I know that some of you who are going off the council, I've never seen eye-to-eye with uncertain things, especially the library. But that doesn't matter. You've done great service for the city. And Rudy, you've done a terrific job.
Thank you.
The speaker before me talked about the school budget, basically. And I attended the school committee meeting last night where they-- there used to be a subcommittee that would consider the budget, but that went away for whatever reason. But last night, somebody brought up the idea of a timeline so that it could be built into the mayor's budget and passed on to you. There was quite a lot of reluctance. And what I'm stating is a concern about the way the school budget is prepared and the timing of it. And I think it's unconscionable when more than 50% of the town budget goes to the schools, and there isn't enough time to properly consider the budget. And I just want to voice my absolute amazement at what I saw. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. It's loud. My name's Jamie Potter. 83 Crescent Street, here in Greenfield. I want to also echo the person before me in thanking all the council members, particularly ones who are stepping off for years of service and for all the great work that you have done here for the city of Greenfield. I'm here tonight as a regular citizen, though I am also on the planning board and previously worked for a local land trust, Mount Grace Land Conservation Trust. I now work for a national land trust called American Farm Land Trust. I'm here as a regular citizen, but I wanted to talk about my support for the Community Preservation Act and to encourage all of you to vote positively to get that on the ballot for next year. The reason for that is the Community Preservation Act is a really powerful tool that over half the towns and cities in the Commonwealth have enacted, particularly because it's such a powerful way to protect our open space, recreation, farmland, affordable housing, and historic preservation, all things that are really important to everybody here in the town of Greenfield. And it's also just a really powerful tool to leverage a lot more money. So by everybody putting in a tiny bit of money, it goes into a pot of funds that can be used for those purposes, for affordable housing, which we so desperately need. And there's been a lot of great motion to get more affordable housing, you know, addressed in our community through zoning and through a lot of great work that Ginny and other members here have been working on. But as well, there's a lot of great state grants out there for open space preservation. We've got a lot of farmland and forest land and wetlands, you know, left in Greenfield. And these are not going to be around forever. A lot of folks who own these lands are perhaps older. They're thinking of transitioning out of farming. And what's going to happen to that farmland? And it's something that's in the master plan, is to adopt the CPA. By Greenfield adopting it, we can, as I said, leverage the match from the state. And as well, it enables us to access more state funding through the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. There's tons of great grant programs for parks, farmland conservation, trails, all kinds of great stuff, that if Greenfield only had this pot of funding, many of these state grant programs require a local match. And so this would enable us not just to get more land protected, but to leverage a lot more state dollars and investment in the places that we so love that make Greenfield so special. So I think it's a no-brainer for Greenfield. Again, half the towns and cities in the state have adopted it, including, you know, Royalston, Northfield, Deerfield, Conway. Lots of our surrounding towns have seen this as a really good idea, and I really encourage all of you to consider this. Get it on the ballot. There's going to be a whole year of education around this to make sure people really understand it. And I so encourage you all to consider this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Does the mayor or any of the department heads want to speak?
Thank you for the opportunity. We have lots of shake.
Oh, okay. All right, moving right along. Motions, orders, and resolutions. I feel like I'm really loud right now. Am I really loud? Okay. Counselor Wheeler?
Thank you, Madam President. Let's see, where we are. The city council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council amends the code of the city of Greenfield by adding Chapter 302 Minimum Wages for Employees Performing Work in the City of Greenfield, Massachusetts Ordinance, which shall become effective on January 1, 2020, as attached hereto, and further amends the table of contents and index of contents of the code and further, that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the city of Greenfield.
Motions had been made and seconded. Report from committee?
This did not-- we did not take a vote to the motion as written, but we-- there was a motion to amend it, and the motion received a unanimous positive recommendation as amended.
What was that amendment?
The amendment was to change the date of implementation from January 1, 2020 to July 1, 2020, and to strike all instances of $15 an hour and replace them with the minimum wage of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Okay, discussion. Counselor Mass?
I move to amend as recommended by the Ways and Means Committee.
Okay, the motion to amend is on the floor and has been seconded. So, discussion on the motion to amend. Counselor Burson?
I appreciate the work of the committee in connection with the compromise relative to the $15 an hour, which I consider not a minimum wage, but a dear living wage. And I'm really disheartened by the fact that we would provide a wage to our employees that is under $15 an hour. It was my hope, when I started this proposal relative to $15 an hour, that individuals would understand that the principal concern of mine, and I believe many, many people in this town, this city, and this country, is the just rancid inequality that exists. And this is just one small infinitesimal step to begin to turn that away. And Massachusetts does not have a minimum wage that amounts to $15 an hour. And if you understand that and you believe that it's necessary for people to maintain a subsistence living and life under that $15 an hour, it is very, very difficult for me to understand why this has been compromised. So, I would rather see it at $15 an hour than at something less. The idea that, when I looked at the contracts for the cafeteria workers and then the contracts for the school aides, that they were at $11 an hour, I just don't know how anybody subsides with one job on $11 an hour. So, I would urge you to reconsider this and come back to the original $15 an hour minimum, so at least that we can begin to address the inequality that is here. And you cannot make progress with scarcity. It's not going to-- it's not going to work.
Counselor Wheeler?
First, I do commend Counselor Burson in making this motion, especially in consideration of the paraprofessionals and those in our city making under $15 an hour. My rationale in voting to amend is that Massachusetts, the state of Massachusetts, is already on a schedule to get to $15 an hour for its minimum wage, and that were this ordinance to pass as written, it would effectively be negated by that, and then it would immediately fall behind any further increases to the minimum wage in the future. And whereas the motion as amended, or the amendment that we're considering, would tie it to the state minimum wage. So at no point in the future would the city ever find itself in a position where anyone is being paid underneath the minimum wage.
Any other discussion on the amendment to the motion? Okay, seeing none, we're going to do a roll call vote. And so this is to change the date to July 1, 2020, and to tie the dollar amount to the minimum wage that the-- of the state.
Counselor Sun?
Yes.
Counselor Burson?
Yes.
Counselor Alice?
Yes.
Counselor Pythrom?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Mass?
Yes.
Vice President Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel?
Yes.
The motion passes. The amendment to the motion. So now, the main motion on the floor is the original motion with the new date and the new minimum wage tied to the state's minimum wage. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, you just raise hands. All in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Abstain. Penny abstained. Thank you. Okay, so for the next two motions, we were supposed to have a public hearing last night, so we can't vote on these, but it's been recommended by our parliamentarian that we table.
Motion to table items 2 and 3 of the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motions are tabled. Counselor Wheeler?
Thank you, President Renault. The city council moved that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council take from the table order number FY20-009, the sum of $460,000 be appropriated for the replacement of the heating system in Green River Schools. And to meet said appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is hereby authorized to borrow said sum of $460,000 pursuant to MGL Chapter 44 or any other enabling statute. And the mayor is hereby authorized to apply for, contract for, accept, and expend any federal and/or state grants or bond premiums available for this project to be used to reduce the appropriation. And further, the mayor is authorized to take any action necessary to carry out the intent and purpose of these projects, which was tabled at the July 17, 2019, city council meeting.
Okay, this is to take it off the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Could you raise your hands, please? One, two, three, four, five. Okay. Abstain? Okay, it's off the table. Counselor Wheeler?
As we all know, this has been tabled for about half the year, and a lot of the discussion holding it up has been around the validity of the proposal from the school committee as to what the plan is at Green River. This body does not have the authority to decide what would go into the school. That's the domain of the school committee, and they approved a plan. So, my logic here is that without a better reason to deny this, I don't understand why it's being tabled over and over and over again. The building needs a heating system. There's no-- I can think of no hypothetical situation in which it does not need a heating system. If it needs to be sold, if it needs to be repurposed, it needs a heating system. So, that's my logic, and that's why I'll be voting for this.
Counselor Mass?
The superintendent of schools has repeatedly asked us if people had concerns about the purpose and use, or at least having information about what the final decision is about that to please table that. There are certain members of this body that do have concerns. I, for one, am one of those members. At the last meeting, we were told an alternative program wouldn't require school choicing students in. But when this was originally proposed, we were told it would require school choicing in students who had behavioral and emotional problems to make it financially stable. Because we have an email from the chairperson of the school committee tonight indicating that the plan is under review means that the school committee itself doesn't know what the purpose of that school is. It seems inadvisable. I don't know if it's going to be sold, that it needs a new heating system. It can be sold without one. My preference is that it be returned to an elementary school and that fifth graders be returned to elementary schools as the STAR report recommended. We don't have that final say, but we do have a check and balance on the budget and the impact that school decisions, policy decisions of the school committee make. And holding up a line item is one way to do that. I caution my colleagues, this requires a two-thirds vote, and there are likely not two-thirds who will vote for it. So if we vote it tonight just because we're tired of tabling it, you're likely to-- you'll both not have a heating system and not have an answer from the school committee. At least this gives us an opportunity to continue to work with the school committee. I think we should table again. I'd move so. Second.
Was that just a motion to table and seconded?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Could you raise-- let's do a roll call.
Counselor Sun?
Aye.
Yes. Counselor Burson?
No.
Counselor Alice?
Yes.
Counselor Pythrom?
Yes.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Come back to me.
Counselor Wheeler?
No.
Counselor Mayo?
No.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
No.
Counselor Mass?
Yes.
Vice President Ricketts?
Yes.
Counselor Stempel?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
No.
Counselor Wheeler?
Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council take from the table order number FY20-53, amend the code of the city of Greenfield as written in the strike through attached hereto, Chapter 56, Article 7--
here to Chapter 56, Article 7, stipend for school board members and city councilors, Section 18, annual stipend effective January 1, 2024. And further, that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the city of Greenfield, which was tabled at the October 16, 2019 City Council meeting.
Second.
Okay, this is to take off the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Could you raise your hand, the opposed? One, two, three, four. Okay, it comes off the table. The motion carries. Counsel Wheeler?
This received a split recommendation from committee with two yes votes, two no votes, and one abstention.
Okay. Just for clarification, what are the amounts exactly? And for folks that are watching, is to increase the school committee and town council to, from $2,000 to $4,000 annually, and the president would get an additional stipend of $500, not to go into effect until January 1, 2023. Correct? Yes.
2024.
2024. My mistake. 2024. Other discussion? Counsel Wheeler?
Motion to amend the motion by striking the words "to Greenfield School Committee." Second.
I will take that as a friendly amendment, if I can.
Yep. Tell me, Counsel Wheeler, one more time, you want to strike the words of the Greenfield School Committee?
Yes, that's the motion. The school committee sent a split recommendation as to whether or not to, they were in support of raising their compensation, and I don't feel without more documentation and studies and justification that I'm in a position to understand their workload or to vote as to raising the stipend.
Yeah. I think that, I would think that that's a bigger amendment than just a friendly amendment. So I think we need a, so does somebody just want to move and then second that, and then we can talk about taking out the school committee?
Madam President, while it has been accepted as a friendly amendment, it has been moved and seconded, so it's on the table.
So are we on the amendment right now? Okay, so the amendment to take out the school committee. Okay, so we're talking about taking out the school committee specifically right now. Okay. Counsel Dolan?
I would advise some different wording for that. I am fine with the numbers, but I think the effect of this amendment is going to reduce the school committee's stipend to zero. In other words, the word 2,000, the number 2,000 has to be in there somewhere for the school committee. So I'm open to the spirit of the amendment and will vote for it, but I would like to reconsider the wording.
Counsel Gilmore?
So I've been on the fence about this ordinance all along, because there's a part of me that feels like we don't get compensated for the amount of work that goes into this. There's another part of me that recognizes that we all volunteered for it, and this is, we knew this going into it. I recognize that the city often struggles with financial decisions, and maybe this is one less thing that we need to worry about. I did talk to Counsel Dolan about his rationale for putting this forward, and part of that is because we want to make sure that we have qualified candidates who are running. And I think that when we're looking at the school committee, that is where we really suffer. We have open seats, we have uncontested seats, and if we really want to improve the candidate pool, I think we would be looking more at the school committee and less at the city council, where we are more likely to have more competition. So I would be really cautious about this amendment, and I think that this would make it a no vote for me.
Counsel Alice?
I'll hold. I have a comment on the full motion when we get there, so I'll hold.
Counsel Mass?
Madam President, it appears that there's some concern about language and the implication of changes to the amendment. I think that this is a matter that needs some additional wordsmithing or consideration by committee. I'd move to refer to committee. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. To move this to committee, all in favor, raise your hands. Counsel Wheeler?
Move that it be ordered that the Greenfield City Council take from the table order number FY 20-48, accept Sections 3 to 7 inclusive of Chapter 44B of the General Laws, otherwise known as the Massachusetts Community Preservation Act, by approving a surcharge on real property for the purposes permitted by said act, including the acquisition, creation and preservation of open space, the acquisition, preservation, rehabilitation and restoration of historic resources, the acquisition, creation, preservation, rehabilitation and restoration of land for recreational use, the acquisition, creation, preservation and support of community housing, and the rehabilitation and restoration of such open space and community housing that is acquired or created as provided under said act, that the amount of such surcharge on real property shall be 1% of the annual real estate tax levy against real property commencing in fiscal year 2022, and that the city hereby accepts the following exemptions from such surcharge permitted under Section 3E of said act, property owned and occupied as a domicile by any person who qualifies for low-income housing or lower moderate-income senior housing in the city, as defined in Section 2 of said act, for $100,000 of the value of each taxable parcel of residential real property, and for $100,000 of the value of each taxable parcel of Class III commercial property and Class IV industrial property as defined in Section 2A of said Chapter 59, which was tabled at the November 20, 2019 City Council meeting.
Okay, this is to take that off the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Could you raise your hands? Okay, abstained? It's off the table. Report from committee, Counsel Wheeler?
After much discussion and as well as a visit from a Community Preservation Act Chair, this received a 3 to 2 positive recommendation.
Okay, and thank you. I'll speak to it as well, as I was the one who brought it to the City Council. I know there were some questions last time, and I believe I have the answers to those, but just as a general overview, and forgive me if I'm telling you something you already know. So the way CPA works is that we vote on it here, and then the further out from a November election that we vote on it, the more time we have to educate voters. It doesn't go into effect until the voters pass it. So this gives us, or not us, but people who want CPA and people who don't want CPA, plenty of time to educate the public about it, because it cannot go onto the ballot until November, which is the benefit of voting with so many months ahead of time. The CPA funds are collected through a surcharge on your tax bill. I think there's some confusion about that. So it's whatever your, it's a percentage of what your tax bill is, and we are proposing a 1% with also an exemption for the first $100,000 on commercial and on residential properties. So if you have a $200,000 home, you'd be paying on 1% about $22 a year. If your home is worth $300,000, you'd be paying about $45 a year. This would collect, with the 1% and the two exemptions, Greenfield would be on track to raise about $175,899,000 a year through CPA, which can be matched and also makes us eligible for other funds from the state. That money is overseen by a nine-member board that is actually appointed by the city council, so it does put more power in the hands of the city council. But it can be up to a nine-member board, but it can only go to conservation of open space, outdoor recreation space, historic preservation and affordable housing. So for instance, the Highland Pond that we talk about, this money could go towards that, because that, the talk has been to make that into an ice skating rink, so this could go towards that. And right now, 176 cities and towns have opted into this. That's a lot. And so I feel with, you know, we've heard tonight, we've all gotten a bazillion emails about the conundrum with the funding for the Paris and where is it going to come from? And, you know, put that aside, this is a way to raise more money through the town, so that if we want to do a project, we're taking it from this pot of money that's being raised, that also has a low-income exemption. And the low-income exemption is, this font was incredibly small, and that's why I put on my glasses. And I think I've read it right, but I think the exemption is $85,000 for a family of four. You would be exempt unless, and it's completely an honest mistake, I'm reading that wrong, but it is $85,000. Good. And if, so if you make below 85, that's a low-income exemption for a family of four. And you, the bills go out from the assessor's office, and in those bills will be an application for the exemption. So folks that, you know, don't have the extra money to pay could either apply for that exemption, but also I think that's why it's important that we do the first $100,000 on the homes and on the commercial properties, because it gives business owners a break. And again, this is something that will go to a town-wide vote, so it's not over and done with us. And I think it would be really, really optimal for our city to do this, and so that's why I've proposed it. Okay, that's it. Counsel Stempel?
Can you please go back over the payment piece? Because I know you said a valuation of $450,000. The payment would be $45. The 1% figure of that is $4,500, and I know the first $100,000s would be exempt if that was the clause. So I just wanted to follow that a little bit more clearly. So let's go to a $400,000 home. So $400,000 home, your property tax is about $8,944. So 1% of that would be $89 if we didn't have the first $100,000 exemption. But because if this gets passed, you'll only be paying on your taxes for $300,000, so it would go to $67 a month.
A year.
I'm sorry, a year. I definitely didn't mean a month.
Counsel Mass?
I want to correct a few misconceptions. All the state programs which require matching can get matching from the general fund. They don't require matching from the Community Preservation Act. Additionally, there's a suggestion that there's state matches to the CPA funds, and that is never funded, just like special education, just like rational transportation. It is a promise that the state makes but does not deliver on. Finally, there's a suggestion that there is a low-income exemption. Well, that low-income exemption only applies if you own the property. So if you live in the high-rise and you're low-income, and it's a multimillion-dollar home, that building, commercial building, that passes their increased taxes onto the tenants, you're still paying that even though you have a low income, because your landlord doesn't have a low income. It is a regressive tax on renters, and it is, while it's designed to address affordability, and that's something I want to address as well, I think we have a motion before us to initiate some zoning changes today, which will address affordability. I'll be supportive of those. This is just an extra tax, and I think it is wrong for a lame-duck council to put this on the ballot before the new members of the council have an opportunity to come in, weigh in, before, the education should happen before we put this on the ballot, not after we put it on the ballot. There is also, if there's a high demand for this, which I have not seen, there is another method to put this on the ballot, and that is the citizens can collect the signatures to put it on the ballot. I haven't seen any group of citizens even start the process of collecting signatures for this. I'd like to see if there was that kind of support in the community. I would be surprised.
Counsel Wheeler?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to respectfully disagree with a couple of things that were just said. Number one, the studies have shown that in general landlords increase rents based on supply and demand. It's a reaction to the market and the types of rents that they can get out of tenants, and it's not generally tied one-to-one with their costs necessarily. And while it's certainly true that the state has done a very poor job of offering anything close to a one-to-one match since more and more and more communities sign up for the Community Preservation Act, they have still, even in the worst years, provided something close to a 30% match, and they dedicated increased funding in this year to it. So you would expect more than that. Also, Greenfield as a low-income community would receive priority for a higher match.
Counsel Alice?
So even with a low-income exemption, based on the low-income standard, which comes from the HUD metric, or matrix, approximately 60% of households in Greenfield would qualify for that exemption. And that exemption doesn't then get shifted to other payers. That exemption means that that money goes away. So the $180,000, whatever the total was that's quoted, will be 60% less if all the people who are eligible for the exemption take it. If all the people eligible for the exemption don't take it, that to me is just wrong. We should not be collecting money from people who are otherwise exempted from paying extra taxes, just simply because they either don't know how or didn't know they could get the exemption. Further, if that many people are exempted, and the exemption process is to go before the Board of Assessors, which it is, our Board of Assessors, I do not believe is going to have enough time to go over that many applications for exemption from the CPA tax that they should, that they ultimately are not required to pay based on their exemption level. In a city like we have, I believe that it is the wrong thing to do, and I hope that this committee will defeat it. And if the new council so chooses to bring it up, then so be it. To me, it just is the wrong thing to do, and we should take the stand here and turn it down.
Counsel Dolan?
I move to call the question.
All in favor? Raise your hands. Raise your hands, please. I'm sorry, really high to call the question, so it means no more debate. It passes. So we'll do a roll call vote on, so this is to adopt the Community Preservation Acts, and the clerk will call a roll.
Counselor Sun?
No.
Counselor Burson?
Yes.
Counselor Alice?
Please come back to me.
Counselor Pythram?
No.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes.
Counselor Gilmore?
Yes.
Counselor Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Mayo?
Yes.
Counselor Hirschfeld?
Yes.
Counselor Mass?
No.
Vice President Ricketts?
Abstained.
Counselor Stempel?
I have some insubstantiality going on here.
Counselor Alice?
What does the vote count currently, Madam Clerk?
One abstention, three no, seven yes. The president has not voted.
And this requires a majority vote?
It does.
Yes.
Motion passes, and there probably will be a reconsideration. Yeah, hold your applause. Oh, the games don't stop, do they? Not even on the last night. Okay. Special tax assessment, Counsel Stempel? Special Tax Assessment, Counselor Stempel. Ah, the City Council moved that it be ordered, that the City Council, the Greenfield City Council take from the table order number FY20-066 to adopt the resolution authorizing the submission of a local incentive-only application and special tax assessment agreement for 401 Liberty Street LLC, to the Economic Assistance Coordinating Council for their review and approval, and to waive the reading of the resolution, which was tabled at the November 20, 2019, City Council meeting. Motion's been made and seconded. Report from committee.
This was a unanimous positive recommendation from committee. I think I've stated it before, and I'll state it again, being a part of this STA, Special Tax Assessment process, there was room for negotiation. I think both sides and both parties were winners on the other side. We were able to secure an agreement with 401 Liberty Street that the special tax assessment agreement would last for seven years instead of 10, so this property will be back on full tax roll sooner. And we will also be only earning more tax money over the years. We won't ever be receiving less. So I am in support of this, and so wasn't the committee.
Madam President.
Yes.
The motion before us is to take the matter from the table, which is non-debatable.
Okay. So it's to take the matter, we can get right back to that. All in favor? To take the matter from the table. Opposed? Abstain? Okay. And what Counselor Stempel said?
Should I reread it now that it's on the table?
No, you don't have to. That's okay.
I'm just very enthusiastic.
Yes, I can tell.
And if I can add, it's putting a property, a blighted property and also a brownfield property, back to use. And that is ours for use for time to come. So it's a win-win.
Counselor Gilmore.
Could somebody refresh my memory and remind me why we tabled this?
It was tabled, it was tabled because part of the special tax assessment and why it's different from tax incremental financing, which is a TIF, which I think more folks are familiar with, is that the assessment is based on the current full valuation of the property. And until recently, the total valuation of the Federal Street property, which was the Lund Properties, was without an entire piece of the package. So we tabled so we could get the full assessment, add it in, and now we have the full package, and that will enable us to vote moving the STA forward. Did I wrap that up correctly? I saw a direct item. Yeah.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Counselor Stempel.
The City Council moved that it be ordered, that the City Council of Greenfield amend the zoning ordinance, Chapter 200, Zoning Article 9, Use Regulations 4.6, Health Service District H as follows. Add the existing use category municipal or commercial parking lot or garage as a use allowed by special permit from the zoning board of appeals within the H district. Currently, the use is not allowed within the H district. And further amend the table of contents and index of the code. And further, that non-substance changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of the city of Greenfield. We didn't vote on this. Oh, these are taken separately.
We voted on the package as a whole, and now I'm realizing that this has been separated out. Is that how we want to move forward? Or... Are these all, are these all, no, these are all different. They're different numbers, yeah. I think here it is. This is it.
Counselor Mass.
This motion appears to be to pass the amendment. Was this initiated, and when was this initiated?
It was initiated in November. Hang on a second. Give us five minutes. Well, not five minutes, give us two minutes.
It's a mistake. We're still within the timeline. All you have to do is copy, all you have to do is copy it over. I know. Yeah. It's always like, why is this so short? You have to do all of the package, because it was initiated as a package.
Madam President.
Okay, so we had initiated as one bulk item, and this way we separated it out so that if one fails, it doesn't all completely fail. Is our memory of why we did this. Counselor Mass?
Madam President, I don't believe that's lawful under Massachusetts law. I think if you initiate as a package, you need to pass the whole package, because passage of part of the package without passage of the rest is a substantial change. As such, I believe this was not the intent of the council, but it was a clerical decision made by staff. I think we're within the timeline if we table this until the January meeting. I think we're all in favor of these zoning amendments, but I'd like us not to mess them up, and I move to table.
All in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Just for clarification, I believe that was under, I don't want the staff to get blamed for that. I believe that was my fault.
And just, I mean, new council next year, but as the Chair of EDC who heard this motion, and we did vote on this motion, and we had a public hearing on this motion, it would have been courteous to let our committee know that this was going to be happening.
Counselor Stempel.
This motion that Counselor Stempel is about to read suffers from the same drawback that the previous motion did, which is that it should be done as multiple motions and not as one as written. So unless there's a procedure to initiate separately tonight, I would recommend that we table.
All in favor? Opposed?
Madam President, there's no motion on the floor for us to table. The motion needs to be made, it doesn't need to be made, but if we're going to table something, a motion needs to be put before the board that we are tabling.
All in favor? Opposed? Counselor Wheeler, if you could just read the zoning, the one that you and Counselor Dolan.
Yes. Motion to table, order number FY20-71.
All in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Motion is tabled. Charter change. Counselor Gilmore.
The City Council moved that it be ordered, that the Greenfield City, sorry, that the Greenfield City Charter, Article 7, Section 7-8, Citizen Referendum Procedures, Subsections A, be amended by inserting of any measure in subsection A to read as follows. Section 7-8, Citizen Referendum Procedures, A. Petition effect on final vote. If not later than 30 days after the date on which the City Council or the School Committee has voted to approve of any measure of petition which was addressed to the City Council or to the School Committee and signed by a number of voters equal to 10% of the total number of voters voting in the most recent regular biennial city election, but not less than 2 and 1/2% of all registered voters as of the same time the petition is filed with the city clerk protesting against the measure or any part thereof, then the effective date of such measure shall be temporarily suspended. Final approver, I'm sorry. Final approval under this section shall not be complete until the time of all remedies pursuant to section 3-7 is expired. The School Committee or the City Council should reconsider its vote on the measure or any part thereof at the next regularly scheduled meeting of that body. And if the measure is not rescinded, the City Council shall provide for the submission of the question for determination by the voters, either at a special election, which it may call at its convenience, or within such time as may be requested by the School Committee or at the next regular city election, provided, however, that pending such submission and determination, the effect of the measure shall continue to be suspended.
Report from committee.
I'm sorry, I'm going to read the rest. And that the City Council further instructs the city clerk to submit the approved vote to the Legislature of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and request the Legislature to amend the city charter.
Report from committee.
After lots and lots of input, we decided to approve this as it reads and just add those three words of any measure, because there is going to be a charter, a charter commission coming up in 2020. And rather than take this on now separately, we will allow that body to take this on if they so choose.
The word "regular"? Did anybody want to comment on that? Did that get?
I'm sorry, "regular."
Okay. So where it says, "Voting in the most recent regular biennial city election," and it's underlined.
Was "regular" not included in the original language?
So last month, the council voted this. The word "regular" was omitted from that vote, which was, the word "regular" was supposed to have been in there, but it was left out. So it's coming back to the council again to have a clarifying vote with the correct language, including the word "regular."
So I think that the vote of my committee probably still stands, although everybody's here, so we could ask them. But the point of this was to clear up that Scrivener's error, so that our charter is clear for the time being. And then next year, when the new charter commission comes and takes a look at this, if they want to do a deep dive and they want to make substantive changes, they will do that. But for now, we're trying to clean this up and go with what had been submitted originally. So I think that "regular" probably doesn't change that.
Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Presentation of petitions and similar papers. Report of committees. Unfinished business. Old business. New business. Counselor Sund, Counselor Pyfram. Well, first Counselor Sund, then Counselor Pyfram.
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody that's worked on the council, and especially the president.
Yeah, thank you.
And the reason, a lot of people disagreed with me on some things, but I just feel I really enjoyed serving on the council, learning about, a lot about the finances and other things that go on in the town. I would like to see more people that live out through the town, step in and listen to the meetings, so they know what the taxes go for, what needs to be done, and where to put the money. Because sometimes we go about putting things where we'd like to see them go instead of what needs to be done. And I just appreciate everyone that sits on the council, because they work extra hard. And I want to thank the treasurer and Mark and the mayor and everybody for the job they do, even though sometimes we don't agree with everything. Everybody works hard, and I really thank everybody for being, working with me.
Thank you, Counselor Sund. Counselor Pyfram?
Thank you. I too, like Counselor Sund, would like to thank the citizens of Greenfield for the opportunity to serve my hometown, where I was born and raised and will continue to stay and, you know, maybe do some more, you know, volunteer work with other things. I've met some great people. I've learned a lot. I have, I'm thrilled that I've got to do what I got to do, but it's time to move on. And I've met some really good people in the community, and I'm looking forward to building more relationships. So thank you, thank everybody here. Also, I wanted to bring up, somebody brought to my attention, Chad Wright, who does the veterans lunches on Thursdays, and Reverend Chris Carlyle from the Episcopal Church are asking if four or five counselors would be available on Sunday, the 22nd, to help serve the needy and the common. They serve dinner to the low-income homeless after their services that they do. They'll be serving around 2:30, and I'd like to give the contact information to them. I myself plan on being there this Sunday at 2:30 to help with that, but they are in need of extra hands to help serve and clean up. Thank you. That's Sunday, the 22nd, this Sunday.
Thank you, Counselor Pyfram. Anybody else? Counselor Ellis?
Thank you, President Reno. I just wanted to thank you, Madam President, for this past two years that you have served as president. I believe in the current climate that we're in, you did a very outstanding job of being able to keep the meetings on track. I'd like to thank all of my colleagues that I've served with this year, as well as the previous years that I have served in the council. I look at the agenda, excuse me, and I see it says the 203rd. And I just appreciate everyone that sits on the council, because they, they work extra hard. And I want to thank the treasurer and, and Mark and the mayor and everybody for the job they do, even though sometimes we don't agree with everything. Everybody works hard, and I really thank everybody for being, working with me.
Thank you, Counselor, thank you, Counselor Sun. Counselor Pyfram?
Thank you. I too, like Counselor Sun, would like to thank the citizens of Greenfield for the opportunity to serve my hometown, where I was born and raised and will continue to stay and, you know, maybe do some more, you know, volunteer work with other things. I've met some great people, I've learned a lot, I have, I'm thrilled that I've got to do what I got to do, but it's time to move on. And I've met some really good people in the community, and I'm looking forward to building more relationships. So thank you, thank everybody here. Also, I wanted to bring up, somebody brought to my attention, Chad Wright, who does the veterans lunches on Thursdays, and Reverend Chris Carlyle from the Episcopal Church are asking if four or five counselors would be available on Sunday, the 22nd, to help serve the needy and the common. They serve dinner to the low-income homeless after their services that they do. They'll be serving around 2:30, and I'd like to give the, our contact information to them. I, myself, plan on being there this Sunday at 2:30 to help with that, but they are in need of extra hands to help serve and clean up. Thank you. That's Sunday, the 22nd, this Sunday.
Thank you, Counselor Pyfram. Anybody else? Counselor Alice?
Thank you, President Reno. I just wanted to thank you, Madam President, for this past two years that you have served as president. I believe, in the current climate that we're in, you did a very outstanding job of being able to keep the meetings on track. I'd like to thank all of my colleagues that I've served with this year, as well as the previous years that I have served in the council. I look at the agenda, excuse me, and I see it says the 200th regular meeting of the Greenfield City Council, for which I've been a member of all of them. I thought this would be easier, I'm sorry. I've loved my time serving for the last 20 years. It's not only something that I enjoyed, it was part of my life. I, I was going to write something, and I couldn't figure out what I wanted to write, so I figured I'd wing it. Well, it's not working so well. I will just say, I've, I've been here and I've, I've worked alongside hundreds of counselors, some who are coming back, some who've been here. I've worked alongside a town manager, I've worked alongside two mayors, seven DPW heads, three police chiefs, five fire chiefs, five superintendents of school, and thousands of great employees. Because Greenfield has the best employees, I think, that any town could have. As everyone has stated, you know, we've not always agreed on things, and, and certainly I've been the fly in the ointment for many things. But I, I passionately believed and thought that the way that I was voting was the right way for the city. I would never have done it any differently. And I thank everyone for being either on the same side or on the other side of that. There are many people who are, you know, I, when I, when I decided I would run for mayor, I did that because obviously I wanted to continue my service, and that was the way in which that I wanted to do that. That didn't pan out, and, and that's fine. That's what happens when there are elections, we, we take the results of those elections and we move forward. When we talk about how we get more people to step up to serve, I would just like to say that it's not, and for me, it's not about the money. For most people, it's not about the money. But the reality is, when people see certain elections and the way that some people are treated during certain elections, no matter who that person is, that is probably the biggest reason that people don't want to serve in a public arena. So I, I hope that going forward, when we think about how we get people to serve, that we think about that being the one way to make sure that people aren't disinclined to serve, is to make them feel like if they run, they and their family will not be made to feel as though it was a mistake. I think Greenfield does a pretty good job of that, but there's always room for improvement. When I, when I first ran for my seat on the council as the Precinct 3 counselor, at the urging of one of my fellow counselors who was also leaving, Counselor Mass, I ran, ironically, my first race as a write-in, and I won. And I didn't know how I was going to like it. I, I was probably about as scared as a hog at a barbecue. I walked into a room with 26 other council members, all of whom were older and presumably smarter and wiser than I. It didn't take long for me to realize that it was where I belonged and that I enjoyed it. So I continued. And for six, six election cycles, I was elected to this position. Surprisingly, being someone who was 18, just home from Daytona Beach with a new bleach blonde hairdo, they still voted for me. So I would like to thank the residents of Greenfield, the residents of Precinct 3, and all of those who, for 20 years, have supported me and supported my work on the council and have believed in, in what I was doing and in what this body does as a whole. This body is an important body, and no amount of money can take, either take away or add to the responsibility and the necessity of this body. So with that, I thank you, and I'll still be around. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Alice. Counselor Burson?
I think you would be remiss to not recognize that a soldier is fading away. And people from time to time ask me, "Mark, what do you think of this thing you created when you, when you, when you put forth a mayor? Is it really working out?" And I think it's, it's important for us to recognize that Mayor Martin spent 10 years of his life in this capacity, and it is certainly one fraught with criticism, rightly or wrongly. But for someone to devote a decade of his life to serving this community should be recognized and acknowledged, whether you agree with his policies, his attitude, his, his demeanor. But he was the person who led this community for 10 years, and I would like to say that we recognize that, and he is one who stepped up. So I would like to thank him for serving in that role for 10 years, and I wish him a happy retirement.
Counselor Ricketts? Thank you, Counselor Burson.
I too just want to take a moment to thank the counselors that are leaving the table. Madam President, Counselor Mass, and Alice, Burson, Sun. I thank those, and Pyframs, excuse me, those people that are leaving. That is Greenfield. They don't all vote the same, they bring different things to the table, and that's what exemplifies what this council is all about and how it is supposed to run. It's not supposed to be one voice. And so I will truly miss these folks, and I know that we didn't always agree, but it makes all of us, I hope, better people and better counselors. It makes us start looking, it makes us not rubber stamp, it makes us want to understand the budget more and to start making the list of what's wants and what's needs. I'm going to truly miss it. I like everything that you brought to the table. I like that you brought everyone to the table with you when you came. You really opened up, and I think I've never seen as much public participation than when President Reno came aboard and really started letting issues happen. And everyone might not have liked it, but it got the community to pay attention to. So I want to thank you, all of you. I wish you the best in all your endeavors. Believe it or not, I am going to miss all the point of orders. Because I know, sometimes, deep down, I feel like, wait, something's wrong, and the minute I hear that, I'm like, I knew it. It's just the way you keep on Robert's rules. So thank you, everyone, for what you bring, and email us. You have so much knowledge, and I, for one, am going to miss you, and I appreciate all that you brought to the table, so thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Ricketts. Counselor Mass?
Thank you, I want to join my colleagues in my appreciation for each and every one of you, especially the people who've stepped up to continue to serve again. I've served six town terms on the, the town, 27-member county, town council, the 13-member town council, and now the 13-member city council, and maybe one day it'll be a six, seven or nine-member council, that would be great. I deeply appreciate the service that each and every one of you give, as well as the many people who serve on our boards and commissions, where I've had an opportunity to serve as well. I, I think it is telling in this, that in this community, people return to service. I, I remember serving with Counselor Alice on that 27-member council, and I stepped away for a long time and came back because I care about this community. Counselor Gwen, who's in the audience tonight, has served with me on the 13-member town council, and he's returning to service on the city council. Former President Wilson, served on the old 27-member council and is returning as parliamentarian. Counselor Hirschfeld stepped away for a little while and popped back on. People serve and return to service, and I, I appreciate that. The new, we'll have a new council, I don't, I, I think you will be surprised that that new council will continue to have vigorous debates. They might not be as, they may be on different issues, but they'll still be not 100% agreement on those issues, and they'll continue to be good dialogue. I wish the new mayor all the success in the world. I know, we were very, very fortunate in that this most recent election, we had three very qualified candidates, and all wanted to step forward, and all wanted this community to go in the right direction, and the people spoke, and they chose an outstanding candidate for mayor, and I am sure she'll do an excellent job. She will need help from the community. So if you're at home, watching this and thinking, why would I want to get involved in that? Please do get involved, and it doesn't have to be on the council, there are dozens of boards and commissions that need volunteers desperately, we can't do this without other people. And I encourage people to serve, because you get far more out of it than you give. I want to say two last things. One, I want to echo Counselor Alice's comments about the way people are treated because of politics in this community, the, and it's across partisan lines, the treatment that Counselor Ricketts has received, the treatment that President Reno has received, the treatment that Counselor Alice has received in the most recent campaign, the treatment that former Counselor Ferguson received when she was on the council. There are some very hateful people in this community, and no amount of politics is worth it. I would encourage people to think, before they speak out, when it's hard, all of us fail. But we see each other in the grocery store, we see each other in Little League, and after, at school events, in houses of worship, and community is far more important than the politics. At the end of the day, the trash will get picked up, the schools will continue to go on, someone will be doing something stupid in the White House. And we, but we live together, and we need to continue to be a community. And then, lastly, I would just say, content to, I wanted to echo my commitment to continued service, I will continue to serve on the Greenfield Community College Board of Trustees. I was recently appointed to the Board of the Holyoke Soldiers Home Board of Trustees, I'll serve there. I have obviously invested into downtown Greenfield, continue to serve the community and the private sector, and I want to extend a very special thank you to President, to Counselor Ricketts, who came and literally helped scrub down some walls for me. We're neighbors, we work together, and the friendship that we have with each other, even when we disagree, is the most valuable thing that I've seen, including my friendship with all the constituents who've come forward and yelled at me or congratulated me over the years. Thank you.
So, you know, I just want to thank you, Counselor Mass, and thank everybody for what's been said, and everyone who has reached out to say goodbye, and I echo what everybody else has said, it's been nine years. I only served with Mayor Martin, I never got to serve with another mayor. So, and I would, I would say goodbye to Mayor Martin as well, he started one year before I got here. I ran to fill Dan Gwen's seat. I didn't know anything about town politics, I was sitting in a, it used to be Bart's Ice Cream, and I saw in the newspaper that there was an open council seat, and I figured, oh, that seems like a way to get involved. I didn't think anybody would run. I was wrong, two other people ran, and I lost, but then, so it just shows you, when you lose, just keep trying and trying. So here I am. Want to thank the town clerks that I've worked with, starting with Maureen Winzek. She was so invaluable, of, of, you know, just full of knowledge, so kind when you're, when you're, you know, we're all scared when we're starting. I know Counselor Alice admitted it earlier, I, I was scared when I was starting, you don't know who to ask, you don't know what to do, they don't give you an information manual, and it's really, like, the clerk who's standing there with people coming in wanting death certificates and birth certificates is also taking care of us at the same time. It's, it's an amazing job that they do. And then Deb Tuttle, who definitely wins the award for the funniest, competent, she's very competent, very kind, she, the, she was, when she was the assistant clerk, she was also so kind, but she's always really funny. And then, of course, Kathy, you've been my clerk, all of us. Kathy's been here for so long, and you're still young, and so, well, not that young, but, you know, Kathy has served this town and served it really, really, really well. And so I just want to thank the clerk's office, because I sit there and I see what you do, and I see all the questions coming in from the counselors and from the town, and the, then everything else that you do, so thank you, and thank you to all my colleagues, those I've agreed with and disagreed with. I, I hope that folks could learn from us, that you can agree, we can agree up until our final minute of our final meeting and still walk out and be friends. And I want to say, if there's one moment that I could take from the nine years that, you know, I would say was one of the best moments, I think it was the library zoning compromise. I think we showed that you can come together from two completely opposite sides of the table, and not everybody agreed with that compromise, but there was, there was something about that feeling of swallowing something that you didn't really want, and knowing that somebody else was swallowing something that they didn't really want, in order for us to move the priorities of, of, of the larger segment of our community forward. And I'll always be grateful for that, I'll always be grateful for, for the council to do that, and, you know, it's always going to be a, a highlight of my, my, my career here, so thank you, I'll still be around, I'm not going anywhere. And thank you also to all the people who came out, to all the meetings, to all the people that took walks with me, the people that reached out, to the people that disagreed with me. The number's probably 50/50, but I've, I've, I've learned so much from both the, the folks who are with me and the folks who are against me, and I know it wasn't ever to be taken personally, that it was really all just about politics, and politics is a blood sport, and it can get rough, and there's no need for it to be like that, it gets like that. But I think if we can all try to remember, it's not about us, it's about the policies, because we are sitting here creating very important policies for the town. And I too wish luck to our, the best of luck to our new mayor, and I, I echo also that we had three great candidates that we were so, so lucky to have, and it's also amazing that we had two counselors running, and I don't really think in one meeting we ever, that ever played itself out, where you thought maybe it would have, I don't think it did. I really don't. Now it's playing out. So I thought everybody really conducted themselves, you know, with, with a lot of integrity, and so I'm excited to see what, what happens and, and how things go with the new mayor and the new council, and you have all of my support. And so with that... Nope, not yet, not yet, not yet, nope. Like I said, this is, it's never going to be easy. Counselor Gilmore?
I, I'd like to move that we reconsider the vote on the Community Preservation Act.
Is there a second? Yes.
Madam President, I believe in order to file, to file a motion for reconsideration, you need to be in the side that passed, or you did. You're prevailing side, okay. I withdraw.
Okay, so a motion to reconsider has been made, and a second. All in favor? Raise your hands up to reconsider the Community Preservation Act. We have to revote it if you want to reconsider it. Okay, so the motion is on the table to reconsider. Councilor Gilmore.
I think that this is a really important part of the discussion that we need to have about moving forward in Greenfield, especially when we're talking about things like affordable housing and creating that outdoor space. I don't feel like we were able to give it the discussion it warranted. But with that, I'd be happy to call the question if people feel like we've already answered all of the questions that we have.
I mean, I too feel like it was called a little early, and I realize that there were some hands. I don't know if anybody wanted to add to that, that when the hands were raised before the call, you know, calling the question was made. But again, I just wanted to speak to that, you know, I just, I do want to be clear that I don't believe, the state is not matching us dollar for dollar on this, but it does make us eligible for some money. When I talked to the folks from the CPA, they said that your chances of getting a full match, of course, would be greater if you went up to the 3%. We're not doing that right now because we want to make it, you know, an easier pill for folks to swallow. And this, you know, I know it might look like this is a bunch of poppycock. Now, who says that word? Poppycock. And, but, you know, in some strange way, if we have this money to use for open space, recreation, and affordable housing, maybe there is a hope that taxes could go down. I know that probably you're thinking, no, that could never happen. But I don't see why not. I don't see why not. So I know that we voted for this, but I'm glad that we did a reconsideration, just to affirm our vote. Councilor Mass.
Madam President, I think it's telling that the idea behind this is it's a toe in the door. We're doing what is, it's a pill to swallow, I think was your words, in that the idea is that this is the smallest pill, and eventually we'll get a bigger one. That said, however, I believe our rules of procedure require motions for reconsideration to be taken up at the next regular town council meeting. So while we voted to reconsider this, I believe the actual final vote needs to take place at the next regular town council meeting.
We're gonna...
Just check.
Check with our parliamentarian.
I'm not sure which prevails. Give me a second to look at.
... Therefore, at the same meeting at which the vote was taken, or to file a...
Unless you have something in the charter, this is approved.
Okay. Is there anything in the charter?
No, there's nothing in the charter.
May I read what the rules of procedure said? This is on page four of your rules of procedure, section 565-6B. Unless otherwise provided by the charter, after a vote has been taken, it shall be in order for any member voting with the prevailing side to move reconsideration thereof at the same meeting at which the vote was taken, or to file with the clerk of the council written notice of a motion to reconsider such vote. So this motion is in order.
Madam President, I agree that the motion can be made at the same meeting, but I believe that the vote takes place at the next regular meeting.
Let's find the answer.
If my recollection isn't from the rules of procedure, it may be from the Charter of Robert's Rules, but it has always been my understanding that it was at the next regular meeting that we were required to vote.
My past practice in all my union work, which of course was questionable, was that we could reconsider at the same meeting. And that worked at the state level with the Mass Teachers Association, too. And they were deadly on Robert's Rules. This is on page 332, section 37 of Robert's Rules of Order. After debate on a motion to reconsider, assuming that this motion is adopted, the chair puts the question and states the...
Can I have an opportunity to review the rules of procedure? And certainly, the council can continue to debate.
Let's just call a two-minute break, because I think some folks would like to go to the lavatory.
Thank you, everybody. So our final answer is that we can vote on this tonight. It can be reconsidered or... Councilor Alice.
Am I correct that based on Robert's Rules, a motion cannot be reconsidered more than once?
That's correct.
That is correct. Councilor Doak.
I'd like to make a motion table.
Second.
Non-debatable.
No, non-debatable.
Can a motion to reconsideration be tabled?
I believe it can.
Okay.
You threw us another one.
You threw us a loose, now that we're looking at whether you reconsider a motion, it's been withdrawn. Councilor Mass.
I'll make it table. Second.
The motion to make is tabled and seconded. I don't see them taking this one off. So all in favor of tabled, raise your hand high.
Okay, hold on. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We're checking to make sure it can be tabled. It can be tabled. So seven yes to table.
It's tabled.
Two weeks.
All in favor? Aye. Post saying motion is adjourned.